Good evening. And welcome to the 2017 Councilor-at-Large Candidate Forum. My name is Suzanne Morielli Lieber. I'm the President and CEO of the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. And this event is brought to you by WMCT-TV and the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. This event is an important part of the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Government Affairs Committee. As an independent organization, we can provide a platform for these debates, helping residents of Marlboro and business people of Marlboro decide who they want for representation. Tonight's forum is aired live on cable and Verizon Firos and will be rerun until the elections on November 7th. Please check WMCT-TV.com for times. We have come together to present this forum for all of your information. I hope the questions posed will encourage everyone to make an informed vote on November 7th. The panelists for this evening are Robert Hannison, Metro West Daily News, and Frank Collins, Trust Energy Solutions, who is the 2017 Chairman of the Board for the Marlboro Regional Chamber. Our official timekeeper for this evening is Emily Greenwood from EKG Networking. This evening, we have seven candidates for four counselor-at-large positions. They are incumbent Mark Oram, incumbent Michael Ossing, incumbent Katie Robey, incumbent Peter Jewer, candidate Maureen Brennan, candidate Adam Crossman, and candidate Michael Newton. Now, the ground rules for this forum. Each candidate will have a one-minute statement opening, according to the number that they chose earlier, and followed by questions from the panel in rotation. Each candidate will have a one-minute response time. The candidates will then have an opportunity to ask his or her opponent at least one question with a one-minute response and a 30-second rebuttal. The forum will end with each candidate giving a two-minute closing, also according to their number that they chose earlier. I would like to thank the audience in advance for practicing courteous behavior to all involved and for turning off their cellphones. Okay, we're going to start with opening statements. Our first opening statement will be presented by Mr. Crossman. Adam?
Well, my name is Adam Crossman, and I'd like to thank the panel and the other candidates for, you know, taking the time to be here and for giving me the opportunity to speak. It's the first time for me. I'm a little nervous, but I'm going to try to enjoy it. Some good advice from Mr. Jewer. You only have one first, so have fun with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Brennan?
Hi, I'm Maureen Brennan. First, I'd like to thank Sue Lieber and the Chamber of Commerce for holding this debate. I'm running for a seat as counselor-at-large. This is my second time running for this seat, the first time being in 2015. I'm running again because I care about this city and I know I can make a difference serving as your out-large counselor. For those of you that don't know me, I was born and raised here, second-generation Brennan. My family's roots go as far back as the shoe industry with Brennan's Shoe Factory, and numerous family members have served over the years in some capacity as public servants. My husband Keith and I own a home here. Our daughter Nicole goes to school here. I'm a practicing attorney here, and my husband owns a business that's been operating in Marlboro for the past 30 years. For these reasons and many others, I feel a deep commitment to serving the city and being a part of its revitalization and growth. As an attorney, I feel that I have the skills necessary to competently and effectively help lead this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Jewer?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for watching this live debate of your candidates for counselor-at-large for the upcoming election to be held on November 7th. My name is Peter Jewer. I am currently serving as one of your four counselors-at-large, and I'm seeking to be reelected by you, the voters of Marlboro. I'd like to start off by thanking Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce and WMCT for hosting this most important event. I was born and raised in Marlboro and have lived here most of my life. My wife Cheryl and I have five children, seven grandchildren, and are proud to call Marlboro our home. I am a United States Navy veteran. I have spent most of my life, most of my adult life, serving this great city. I retired as a firefighter from the Marlboro Fire Department in 2008, serving over 30 years. I was Ward Four City Counselor for four years, and I am completing my first term as counselor-at-large this year. I look forward to this debate this evening and hope that I can convince you, the voters, to reelect me, Peter Jewer, to another two years as one of your counselors-at-large.
Thank you. Mr. Oram?
And thank you, Suzanne. My name is Mark Oram, and I am seeking a seat, as we all are, for one of the four seats as city counselor-at-large. I would like to thank again, and you're getting a lot of thanks tonight, Suzanne and the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce, WMCT-TV, as well as the media. My background is as follows. I've lived in Marlboro most of my life. I am a little bit of a carpetbagger. I lived in Hudson for six, but I was born at Marlboro Hospital. But I have a family history here, as well as Ms. Maureen does, with generations of Orem's that have lived in Marlboro. I also have been educated from third grade on in Marlboro's public school system. I have a master's degree in public health and have taken master's degree programs in public administration. And that was both at Boston University for my master's in public health and Framingham State University, as it's called now, for my public administration courses. I also obtained my bachelor's of science at Framingham State University.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Robey?
I would like to thank WMCT-TV, the Chamber of Commerce, and the panel for this opportunity to join the other counselor-at-large to discuss the issues affecting Marlboro. My husband Eric Bauer and I celebrated 35 years of marriage in September. We're not townies, but we have been a part of Marlboro for the last 28 years. Our children, Jason and Rebecca, both graduated from Marlboro High School, each having spent 12 years in our public schools. I served on the Marlboro School Committee before being elected to the city council. I brought with me the knowledge and appreciation that careful consideration of finances and budgets are fundamental to building sound public policy. This is knowledge I use on the council in challenging economic times as well as times of prosperity. I think everyone who knows me will agree, I take my responsibilities as a counselor very seriously. This is not a glamorous job. It can be challenging and frustrating, but is truly rewarding serving the residents of Marlboro.
Thank you. And Michael Newton?
Welcome. My name is Michael Newton. I'm running for city council-at-large for the city of Marlboro. I was a firefighter, EMT, for the city for over 30 years, including seven years mechanic for the department. I retired last year from the department. I have worked for municipalities for almost all of my adult life and have had a recent interest in public government to see if I can make a difference for the citizens of Marlboro. One of my biggest reasons for wanting to seek a seat in the city council is I'd like to be a counselor that is there for the city employees. As I see now, there are no relationship between city councils and employees. I'd like to see if I could change that. I would also like to be a counselor that is there for the small business person. I know at times there are small businesses that don't have a say in things in the city, and I'd like to see if I could change that. I believe I have a great understanding when it comes to public safety within the city and what the wants and needs are for our public servants. I would like to be...
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Ossing?
Thank you, Sue. I'm currently serving my ninth term as your counselor-at-large. I'm running because I believe my experience, education, and passion for government that solves problems and ensure that Marlboro prepares for and plans for the future. I'm 58 years old and lived in Marlboro for 56 years. I've been married to my lovely wife Linda for 27 years. We have two wonderful children, Kalen, age 26, and Cameron, age 25. I graduated from the Marlboro Public School System and received my Bachelor of Science degree in nuclear engineering from the University of Ole. I recently retired after being employed at the Seabrook Station Nuclear Power Plant for over 35 years. At Seabrook Station, I've held various engineering, project management, and leadership positions, including licensing manager and engineering programs manager. I'm an engineer by profession. For over 35 years, I've been solving problems in the workplace, problems involving local, state, and federal people. I will apply the same problem-solving skills that I've developed in the private sector to my work as your counselor-at-large.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going on to the second part of our forum today, and I would like questions from the panel. And Robert Hannison, you are first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Following the 2016 successful referendum to legalize recreational marijuana in the state, every community in the state had to make, is now making decisions on how they will regulate businesses associated with recreational marijuana. The town of Milford recently took the position to ban recreational pot shops as well as businesses associated with that, including grow facilities and testing facilities. What position do you think the city of Marlboro should take when it comes to regulating recreational marijuana businesses?
Can we start with Mr. Jewer?
Thank you. That's a very good question. I supported a moratorium last year to put a one-year time limit before we even look at the marijuana issue. When I first did this, it was to give the state time to get the laws and so forth up to date. That moratorium expires June 30th of next year, when marijuana stores will be allowed to open. The voters voted this in. I am a person that supports what the voters do, but I want to make sure that Marlboro is ready to deal with the impact that marijuana sales will have to our community.
Thank you. Mr. Oram?
Thank you. Related to your question on regulating, actually, I work in the field of public health, and the State Department of Public Health is regulating medical marijuana. As it relates to recreational, we do need some more work in that area. I was privileged to be able to go to a meeting with state reps indicating that we still have a long ways to go, and we do have the commission now at the state level. But it will come down to the local level as well. In my view, it will need to be regulated by either the state or the locals. I do believe that the DPH, Department of Public Health, has a good handle on medical marijuana and would expect that they try to take the role of being the leaders in recreational marijuana as well, since they have the greatest knowledge at this point. To try to get every city and town to regulate could create a mix of regulations and so forth. But I think, as I noted, the state would be best placed in regulating medical as well as recreational marijuana.
Thank you. Ms. Robey?
The city of Marlboro did overwhelmingly support having marijuana on the ballot when it was there. I think it's important as a city council that we respect that position, and I would support having marijuana be available. I think what we can do as a city council are make regulations to where those sites will be located. I am the Chair of Legislative and Legal Affairs for the city council, along with Mr. Jewer. I did support a moratorium. We did have discussion, as he indicated. At this point, I think we may need to rethink that. I talked to the legal department, who had gone to a recent Massachusetts Legal Association meeting, and they are indicating that a moratorium might be smarter at a later date so that we know what the rules are before we have the moratorium.
Thank you. Mr. Ossing?
Thank you, Sue. So, two key points. One, the city's got to work on zoning power, where to put them, just like we did for the medical marijuana facilities. And two, how many facilities to have. So those are going to be the two key pieces that the city council will be involved in setting up the legislation as to how many and where. Those are the two big issues for medical marijuana in Marlboro.
Thank you. Ms. Brennan?
I understand that the city of Marlboro residents overwhelmingly voted for this, but my guess is that most residents of Marlboro, all the residents that did vote for that law, would want it regulated and would want it regulated in a way that it doesn't impact the children negatively in our community and, you know, that it's done in a safe, that it's regulated in a way that's safe for our children. And that's how I would look at it and address it.
Thank you. Mr. Crossman?
Definitely, regulation and placement is key with that. We don't want anything near any schools of any sort. Doctors in places that have sided with the medical marijuana, they've actually prescribed about 1,800 less prescriptions a year to opiates. A lot of that is by the patient choice. And with the opioid crisis that's going on out there, if there's anything that we can help to curb that, I think is an option to look into. But definitely, the placement is going to have to be key with that because you've got to make sure that everybody's safe.
Okay. Mr. Newton?
I believe it should be regulated also, and where these shops are located should also be discussed within the city, with the city council and the mayor. It shouldn't just be put anywhere in the city. I think sobriety is going to be a big thing down the road also that we're going to have to look at with our police department.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Collins, would you like to ask questions?
Certainly. Welcome, everyone. How do you feel your current or past job experience will assist you in your role as a city counselor if elected?
Could we start with Mr. Newton?
For me, it's working for, in the city for over 30 years. I have a lot of experience with work with many different departments. As a firefighter, we worked with the DPW, the police department, city hall, the schools, facilities. Being a former mechanic, I have a great understanding on maintenance. I was involved a lot with our new station that was built on Maple Street back in the '90s, the issues that we had with the building. And when it comes to maintenance, preventative maintenance is a huge, huge thing in the city. We need to stay up on it. We need to see that the police, fire, DPW, all get the best equipment. We shouldn't never undercut them when they want to buy the best stuff. We should have the best training also, too. All the employees deserve the best training in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Crossman?
Right now, I'm currently an outside sales associate for ABC Supply with the nation's largest roofing supplier. I do a lot of time on the road, meeting with contractors, sometimes homeowners with them. And I think that the fact that I was not only born and raised and have roots here going back ninety-some-odd years, close to a century now, in the same house, in fact, and the having to deal with multiple different people in different ways, I've always kind of come from a customer service background with my other jobs. So I feel all of that past experience kind of helps me work with multiple different people in different areas.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brennan?
Well, as an attorney and going to law school to pass law school and take the bar, I can tell you this, I'm hardworking. I pay attention to detail. I have expertise in research such that I can research issues, and I work very hard at finding a solution to the issues that confront my clients. I would apply those same skills to the issues that confront the city, and I would take into consideration also what the residents want when I'm taking into consideration those issues and trying to find a solution.
Thank you. Mr. Ossing?
Thank you, Sue. My experience in the nuclear industry, being up there for 35 years, it's a highly regulated industry. They provided us with the skill set for managing leadership-type positions. I've been able to apply those for here on the city council, whether it's from working with local, state, and federal people to managing budgets, planning out fiscal plans. All that stuff's been instrumental, and I credit the success I've had in the nuclear industry to my success on the council.
Thank you. Ms. Robey?
Thank you, Sue. I've had a multitude of jobs over my lifetime. I think the ability to transition from one job to another, I'm pretty flexible, those are skills that need to be used as a city counselor. I learned as a stay-at-home mom for my children that I'm good at mediating issues and that I can remain calm while they are screaming in the grocery store, and I know when to back down. And I think all of those are important for being a city counselor.
Thank you. Mr. Oram?
Thank you. Well, first, my background is municipal leadership management. I've been in that field for most of my life. I have worked for a couple businesses. Also, understanding Marlboro's culture and needs. I was a city counselor at Ward Six for almost, for 12 years. And also, just having those administrative courses that I took at Framingham State come into play. Important, as I said, is being a city counselor for a local ward. You get to understand their needs and the needs of the community. And as I've always said, I am here to support those local counselors as well. Another area is having children in the school system. I have, from 17 to 25 years of age, my children, they all went through Marlboro Public Schools. And my son is the last of the three, and he's a senior. So I get to meet the parents at various events and understanding the school needs, mowing lawns back as a kid for 30 people, understanding the elderly needs, and understanding the general needs of our community. I think it's been helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Jewer?
Thank you. As a firefighter for thirty, I was a firefighter for over 30 years in the city. I retired nine years ago. One of the things that I have that, you know, kind of put me in a different category was I was on the city council while I was a member of the Marlboro Fire Department. So in those few years, I got to see how both sides of the city operated from the, as an employee and as a member of the council. And that helped me greatly when I was the Ward Four counselor. Again, I've been retired for nine years, so now, being retired, I have the time, the energy, and the willingness to be there to help the residents of the city of Marlboro. I meet, as I will say later, regularly with department heads to make sure that the residents' needs are met.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Hannison, do you have another question?
Sure. So in the 17 years that I've been a reporter and editor at Metro West, I think every single community in our coverage area has listed downtown revitalization as a priority. Something recently that's happened in Marlboro is Marlboro has proactively pursued a brewery or a brew pub to come to its downtown. Do you agree with the idea of bringing that business to downtown Marlboro? And specifically, what do you see as the attributes of downtown Marlboro, and what does it need to improve?
I would like Mr. Ossing to answer that.
Certainly. Thank you, Sue. So, yeah, so I think the council took a big first step in setting up the zoning ordinance for the Marlboro Downtown Village that would allow expanded use, whether it's housing, restaurants, developments. So for a brew pub, yes, we've seen the success over in Hudson. Hopefully have a similar-type success here in Marlboro. But that type of action of forward-thinking on the council's part to help revitalize the downtown area, but ultimately, it's going to be the businesses that make it work and the citizens that go to support them because they have to have the right business model, and it's got to work in downtown Marlboro to be successful. And a good chamber of commerce.
Well, thank you. Ms. Robey?
Thank you. As Mr. Ossing said, the council did do a rezoning for Marlboro Village. We did allow brew pubs in that zoning, and then we found out that we needed to make a few changes to the city code to allow them to come in. So we're now in the process of making that happen. I do think that the particular vendor that's coming into Marlboro is a very good fix for downtown. They are going to be serving beer. They're not going to have food, similar to one in Hudson. So it will allow the restaurants in downtown to have an increase in business as people will stop by their first to buy food that they can then bring with them. So I hope that this is a first of many in the city of Marlboro.
Thank you. Mr. Oram?
Thank you. And I agree with the past comments, and the city of Marlboro has made it easier for businesses to get into our downtown. And we do have to realize it's the heart of our city. At the same time, there are issues with parking. We have to realize that, expect that any developer may be challenged with that. And I think we're starting to see issues with that with previous proposals, and they're not seeming to come to life. The chamber, very important part of how we handle this, the downtown merchants, the residents, making sure they do the best they can to get to our downtown merchants. Many times, people may not realize the value of the various shops we have in the small business format that we have on downtown Marlboro. There could be alternate transportation opportunities down the road, but right now, people still like their own personal vehicle. So we have to work with that and work with the various agencies I just mentioned, including the Marlboro Economic Development Council Corporation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jewer?
Thank you again. And everything that my colleagues have said is, you know, basically the way I feel. Marlboro Main Street is a place I think the residents want to see grow. I think they want to see new businesses come in there, including the brewery pub. We can see that just in the different festivities that happen down on Main Street. Recently, we had the festival down here on Main Street, well-attended. We see the people coming over to our Union Common, well-attended. You know, people want to come to Marlboro. I don't think there is a large parking problem in Marlboro. I thought there was. I was challenged to look at it, and there's plenty of parking in Marlboro. Maybe not right at the door, but our parking garages in the back of city hall and by the senior center can certainly handle the amount of people that want to come and visit downtown Marlboro.
Thank you. Ms. Brennan?
Craft beer is the thing today. Everybody loves brew pubs, trying new beers, young, old people. I think it's a good thing that we have a craft, a brew pub coming to Marlboro to offer this type of craft beer. I think it will draw people to Marlboro. And I also think that, consistent with Hudson and other communities, I think that it will encourage other businesses to come downtown because there's going to be people coming here, new people, young people, and old people, like I said, older people. So I'm for that type of business, and I think that we have a wonderful downtown area to offer those kind of businesses to come and flourish. And I think that people, I think we'll be able to attract more people to Marlboro's downtown.
Thank you. Mr. Crossman?
I am looking forward to the idea of a brew pub. It is definitely becoming a lot more popular. A lot of surrounding towns are doing them as well. It'll help us to kind of stay up with some of the times. As somebody who, I grow my own hops myself, actually, it provides my chain-link fence with a privacy wall. Seeing there's a lot of desire on social media for something like that, I've seen questions about, is there anything like that in Marlboro? Is there, you know, anything around? And I think it's going to definitely be somewhat of a hit, and I think it's something that not only am I going to enjoy, but a bunch of people that I know, so I think it's a good thing.
Thank you. And Mr. Newton?
Actually, funny you ask. I've been in the craft beer business for two and a half years now, part-time. A lot of people might not know that we actually almost had a brewery here in Marlboro in the old fire station back in the '90s. Brewery was looking to come here. We weren't fast enough to move to the new station, so they ended up going, actually, to Concord. Make all downtown craft breweries for me. Absolutely perfect. But actually, you know, I live in the West. I have come up Forest Street numerous times now. There's actually a brand-new building on Forest Street that I keep looking at would make an awesome brewery. It's out of the way, it's out of downtown, but you know what? The old downtown flair is awesome for breweries. I've gone all over the country now to breweries. This downtown would actually work perfect for it. I am a huge proponent for it. I'd love to open my own place to begin with, so that's my ending.
Thank you very much. We have time for another question. Mr. Collins?
Besides the downtown area, Marlboro's a physically large city, relatively speaking. What are the top three areas of the city besides downtown that you would like to address, and why?
I would like to start with Ms. Brennan.
Specifically, I'm sorry, addressed for...
Where do you see issues throughout the city, besides downtown, that maybe need something addressed?
Okay, thank you. The west side of town with the Apex Center, I understand that there's, the services for that side of the city will definitely need addressing. For instance, fire, police response services, water services, that's something that's going to need addressing and looking at because I don't believe, my time? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't believe that the current services that can be provided to that end of town are sufficient to handle the influx of businesses and the people using those services. Another area of town that I think needs addressing, well, it's actually an issue, is school. We need another school. So we need to find a location in town for an additional school as our schools are overcrowded.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crossman?
I would definitely say the volume of the Apex Center, we definitely need to look at assisting...
at assisting emergency services in that area. There's really not much, there's going to be a whole lot of activity going on. It looks nice, it does, so it's kind of not so much for them. Like, I like trees, but I want to, but it's not coming out to be too bad. And I really think that it could bring a good amount of, you know, people into the city. But we also have to be prepared to take care of them if something bad does go wrong. So, I definitely think that the fire station down there would be a great idea. It's very hard to try to find an area, and there's only so much land out there. But, and again, as Maureen said, definitely schools. I'm also big for elderly homes, because I think there's a lot of elderly that need some good affordable housing out there.
Thank you. Mr. Newton?
On a public safety aspect, I definitely look at the west part of the city. The city has grown tremendous over the last few years in the west. Response times are getting longer and longer and longer. Road construction, it's hard to pinpoint three spots. Road construction is so much right now, it is so difficult for any public safety services to get around the city safely and quickly to handle any situation. We are, to me, five years overdue for public safety building in the west side of the city. We should have thought of this a long time ago. We knew the building was going to come out that area, and we should have done with that. Donald Lynch Boulevard's another area, a great area to develop, and let's put more stuff out there. We have a mall, we can do things out that way. Then we got to look at Sudbury Street. I look at how long it takes public safety to get to the furthest places in the city. So, that's what I look at.
Thank you. Mr. Juair?
Thank you. Asking this question, and one firefighter following another firefighter, you're going to get almost the same answer.
It wasn't intentional.
You know, response time, as Mr. Newton said, you know, is crucial. I've been an advocate for a west-side fire station since I got on the council in 2005, you know, and it's finally getting there. There's being a committee formed, which I am going to be part of, to find a location for that new fire station out in the west part of the city. It is well-needed, and we, you know, we'll be acting on it hopefully very soon. Schools, we are addressing the school issue. It just came up on the council in the last few months, and it's something that we have to look at. We know it's coming, and we have to be ready for it. The other two conditions, real quick, is elderly housing. We have to be looking at that. And the road construction that's going on...
Thank you. Sorry, thank you. Mr. Oram?
Okay, and I'm going to try to make it into three, with three big-ticket items already discussed. Our school needs, our safety needs, and I come from a family of safety as well, and I don't want to forget the police needs of this city, as well as the fire needs, as well as the library, which wasn't mentioned. As it relates to the other two, I would say improvement needs would be a potential to look at. Our road infrastructure, make sure they're being taken care of by need, not by any other method. Also, the last one I would add to the three, because I have the three big tickets, is I'd like to see a dog park in this city. I've been asking for one. I think it's overdue, and it's a large enough city to get people to a park, to be able to have their animals recreate to some degree as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roby?
I would also agree that a fire station is a necessity, but I'll go with three other topics. I think Donald Lynch Boulevard was already mentioned, but it is an area that was under consideration. There was a proposal to deal with one of the businesses on Donald Lynch. I think there's now a desire to look at it as an overlay, to see if we can rezone part of it, to be able to bring in other kinds of uses other than commercial, which would be a great asset to that street. We also have Route 20 East, which has some issues, and there was a plan to work on that. It kind of got by the byway as other things happened in the city. That's another entrance to the city, and we need to look at that issue. And the third is a recent one from Marlboro, the rail trail. How much development do we want to put on the rail trail? I think we need to look at that very seriously.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Aussing?
Thanks, Sue. So, again, your question's centered around what three areas to focus on. So, where I think the focus should be for the city going forward, and we're slowly working there, is Lincoln Street. I think there's a great opportunity from down from the rail trail, right up to continue revitalizing Lincoln Street from the various buildings that are going to become for sale on Lincoln Street. And I think that would be a gem for the city. We've seen it with the loft. We need similar-type structures with the various buildings that are going to come up for sale to improve our Lincoln Street. Second one is the airport. Airport's going to become available to us, and so what do we do with the airport? So, the airport would be my second item to consider. What do we want to do with the airport area? And then, as Council Roby said, the rail trail. The city's been very effective with the use of overlay districts to put various developments at Avalon on the west side of the city, the Apex Center, and the downtown village. So, these districts and overlays are very effective for us going forward.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank our panelists for your questions. They were really thought-provoking and great. We are now going to move into a fun part of our forum. Each candidate here will have an opportunity to ask one question of an opposing candidate, and that, then you have a thirty-second rebuttal. So, the person you ask the question for has a one-minute answer, and then you have a thirty-second rebuttal. I would like to go with the order of the open. I would like to start with Mr. Crossman.
Thank you. Councilor Aussing, this is not to pick on you, simply because you've been here the longest. You're the longest seated. Having young children at home, specifically two, five, and surprisingly, twenty as well. I care about our water quality. Last year, Marlboro had failed for lead twice. And besides the fact that residents weren't notified of the failed tests, we have a, like, new treatment plant currently not functioning. The costs associated with the rehab were passed down into the water rate increases. However, the city is still purchasing some water from the NWRA. Do you have any ideas in place, possible plans for maybe occupying the newly renovated plant and no longer purchasing that portion from the MWRA?
So, the MWRA plant out in Cedar Hill, MWRA's plant, that's not ours. We spent eighty million dollars to upgrade both the east and westly treatment plants to get our treatment side going. There have been some issues with the water treatment plant in Marlboro that subsidized. We still spend over five million dollars of money on MWRA water. We just don't have the ability to produce enough water for the city of Marlboro. We're subsidizing that with some water from the Marlboro Water Plant. There were some issues that Mr. Crossman spoke about. The city's now working on those. They're in the process of trying to get the water plant up and running again, and I anticipate that it will be up and running again to subsidize, again, help lower our MWRA water bills.
Very good. Do you have a rebuttal?
I was hoping that we could possibly speak with some of those who put bids in in the past, and figure out what the reasons are for possibly not doing so now, or why they may not want to be there. Kind of go from there, and if it's an administration issue, we could look into that, or basically whatever it takes. I think we need to get that going after spending the money and kind of sitting there getting dust.
Sure.
Thank you very much. And the next one would be Ms. Brennan.
My question's for Mr. Juair. Growth in population in the past decade has made it incumbent on the city leaders to plan for this increase of residents in the areas of housing, schools, public safety, and city services. What have you done as an at-large councillor to address this growth and the resulting needs?
Well, the first thing I've addressed over, like I said, since I've been on the council, was the public safety aspect. I've advocated for years to get a public safety facility up to date out in the west part of the city. Schooling is something that we've looked at. Recently, we just got a, from the mayor, we received an estimate of sixty-seven million dollars to address the school issues in building the new school. And right away, you know, I went into, let's think, alternative before we make a commitment of spending sixty-seven million dollars, which we would get fifty-five percent back, I believe, from the state. But I have looked at that. I think alternatives are something we have to look at. I think I'm just about there.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have a rebuttal?
Do you think waiting is the answer? It's my understanding that by waiting, we've waited already a couple of years, and the price tag on, say, an additional school was approximately half of the cost today. Do you think it's prudent to wait?
I think it's prudent to plan properly, to just jump into building a new school and, you know, looking at the present need versus what are we going to need in the future? You know, we did that with the fire station on Maple Street. We built for the present. Now, that station is outdated, and it's not even twenty years old. So, if we're going to start planning, building a school, let's make sure it's good for today. Let's plan it properly and make sure that it's good for twenty-five, thirty, fifty years down the road.
Thank you very much. And actually, Mr. Juair, you get to ask the next question.
Oh, thank you. And I will cross over to Ms. Brennan. Should you be successful in getting elected to this term for the city council, where do you see the city different with you being on the council two years from now?
Well, I can tell you this. I'll work very hard for the residents of this great city that we live in. I listen well. It's my nature by trade. I think it's important that, I get the impression from speaking to the residents of Marlboro that they are not being heard. A lot of residents in this town feel like they're not being heard by their elected officials. So, it would be my goal to speak to the residents, find out what their concerns are, pay attention to what their concerns are, and make sure that they know that I am hearing them, and that I'll work very hard for them to get what it is that they need or want.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up?
Yes. You've got seven candidates here that I'm sure, you know, feel the same way. They need to, you know, they would work hard for the residents. I feel I do that myself. I'm available all the time. But the problem is, the residents don't reach out, I'm going to say to me, I can't speak for my colleagues. If a resident calls me, they get an answer, almost immediately, you know, a reply immediately that I'll look into something and I'll take care of it. You know, but...
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, thank you. I know it.
It would have gone on.
I know. It's hard. Mr. Oram?
Okay, my question would be to the newer potential candidates for city council at large.
One person?
One person would be, I guess, Mike, I'll choose you. Mike, I, through budget years, have always looked at trying to save and be financially conservative. Two of the areas are having dedicated funds to certain activities, such as the Marlboro Economic Development Council Corporation, as well as our recreational facilities. And could you, would you be willing, if you were a new city councillor, to look at some changing that legislation so that indeed, if those taxes are coming from areas that are causing needs for this city, to maybe pay for our city needs?
Certainly. Would I always be open to looking at other avenues and to gain money into the city, or to pay for different things? Absolutely. We always need to look at different avenues to find ways to bring money in to the city, to help whether it's schools, recreation, fire, police, DPW. There's always got to be a different way to bring a tax base into the city, no matter what it is.
Thank you. Do you have a rebuttal?
I guess not a rebuttal, but the open-mindedness, that is what I was looking to hear, and I appear to be hearing that. There's no sunset clause in either one of those fees that are collected. And sometimes, the city needs change. And, you know, you get needs from some of the city issues that appear because of development, such as the west side of our city. So, I tailored it towards you because of the fact you brought up the west side of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roby?
Thank you. My question is for Mr. Crossman. Last year, the city council approved an abbreviated budget for the first time, and that I'm aware of. It had a one-year sunset clause on it. If you are elected as a city councillor, would you agree to keep that in place, or would you change?
I would actually have to look into that. I'm not sure what specifically you're speaking with, but I would not want to speak and make a decision now on something that I really don't know. I'd rather get a definitive answer and really put some thought into it.
In the past, the council approved a budget with line items, with a lot of line items, that we would look at each line item. And then we had the ability to approve transfers. The abbreviated budget gives us salaries and other services. We can only approve that part of it. And the transfers are being done through the mayor's office with the auditor.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Newton?
My question's for Mr. Juair.
Okay.
Mr. Juair, you being a former firefighter, and realizing that the present Station Two sits in the most densely populated area of the city, with the largest fire hazard, the biggest fire load, seeing the study that came out by the company, and seeing that it is code-deficient, as they're saying, would you close, renovate, or relocate the station in another place on French Hill?
That would all depend on what we decide to do with the new west-side fire station. You know, to answer that question, without knowing the location of where that fire station is going to be, would be an injustice, because that location of the new west-side fire station is going to be key as to what we do with Pleasant Street.
Thank you. Do you want to?
In my thinking, in my service over all the years, to me, we should never have to respond uphill to a call or say a fire, and especially at wintertime. That's my reason for asking this question, and for not moving the station out of that area.
I would have agreed with that statement twenty, twenty-five years ago. The way the engines are built today, and with the, I forget the exact technology, but the drop-down chains that are attached to the truck. These trucks are pretty mobile, both, you know, throughout the year, especially in the winter.
Thank you. And last but not least, Mr. Aussing?
Thank you, Sue. This question's for Ms. Brennan. Ms. Brennan, of the two candidates running for mayor, who do you support, and why do you believe they will be the best mayor from Marlboro?
Now, I'm going to tell you. I don't know that I want to disclose who I support or who I'm voting for. May the best man win.
That's it? Okay. Thank you. All righty. We have just enough time for everyone to do their closing statements. And it will be in the order which they chose earlier. And our first closing statement, it is a two-minute statement. Our first closing statement is Adam Crossman.
Thank you, Suzanne. So, there are a lot of issues to be taken care of or to be looked into throughout this whole city. There's no small amount of things going on. Am I the one to fix them? Certainly not by myself. I am one to question and try to keep things moving in a forward motion, if I can. No one person can do it on their own. I wouldn't expect to be. I wouldn't expect any of you to be able to. But hopefully, with the support of the voters, I may have the opportunity to work with everybody, not against everybody, to just get some things done that are coming from maybe a different perspective. I'm no spring chicken, but, you know, I'm a little bit of a different thinker in some areas. And basically, I'm just looking for a chance to show what I can do and help to better the city that has been a part of my family's history for going on a hundred years now. And basically, I'm just hoping that everybody will come out November seventh and vote for four people. I ask for one of your four votes, and may the best four win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Did you enjoy yourself?
I did.
Okay. Ms. Roby?
I'm humbled and gratified by the trust the voters of Marlboro have shown by allowing me to serve as a city councillor for the last six years. Together, we have seen our great little city go through many changes. Businesses are moving to Marlboro. Today, Marlboro is thriving, and we should be proud of our achievements. But growth brings challenges. We need to add housing for our expanding workforce. As we do, we need to make sure it remains affordable for everyone. Young people just starting out, elderly who are on fixed incomes, and those who may be less fortunate. We know education is the great lever of opportunity in our society. Therefore, it's critical to ensure we have sufficient resources to educate our children. We must make sure our public safety needs are met. As we face these challenges, it's important to remain keenly aware of financial costs of our actions. The city council can't be cavalier with the money the taxpayers have entrusted us to spend wisely. Our goal must be to find the right balance between paying for the things we need and keeping taxes fair for all. If you choose to allow me to continue to serve on your If you choose to allow me to continue to serve on your city council, I will continue to be thorough in reviewing the details of the council business. I promise to listen carefully to the people I serve and base my votes on solid facts. Winston Churchill said, "We make a living by what we do, but we make a life by what we give." I ask that you let me continue to be a part of our ongoing efforts to make Marlboro a great place to live, work, and play. I ask for one of your votes on Tuesday, November 7th.
Thank you. Mr. Newton.
Being a resident of the west, the Glen Street area, there are a number of issues I would like to try to move forward and assist in. West Side Fire Station, including manning for the station, apparatus, further manning for the department itself, more manning for the police department. The growth in the west has been enormous in the last few years, and with the present manning of both the fire department and the police department, including EMS, all these departments are stretched to their limit. It's only a matter of time before something either happens that either department might not be able to handle. The Apex Project. Living in this area has opened my eyes to large projects and big business, and what I believe the city council and the mayor should have thought of priorities before this project started. I believe there were mistakes made with this project, mostly with residents and traffic, not thinking of them first, and what disruption to all their lives it has caused in the area of the city. Supplemental water supply. What are we going to do to get it back up and running, and what are the associated Excuse me. DPW. I believe that DPW needs their own DPW commissioner, who is a certified engineer. City services, schools, are they need... Do they have their needs, especially when it comes to special needs? I have a better understanding of special needs, seeing I have a stepson who has special needs, and my wife works for special needs. Building construction, especially when it comes to preventive maintenance, have we... And have dealt with this numerous years. I want to be a councillor that's gonna help the city grow and become safe and good for the citizens of Marlboro and the small business that come here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brennan, you're next.
I want to again thank the Chamber of Commerce. In particular, it's President Sue Leiber for sponsoring this debate. Sue, your time and generous spirit is greatly appreciated by all attending or watching from home. We in Marlboro have been so fortunate and blessed to be able to go about our lives each and every day, working, loving our families, enjoying the services the city provides, feeling safe as we go about our business. The erratic weather that has erupted the lives of our U.S. sisters and brothers and the tragic recent deaths of fellow citizens reminds me that here in Marlboro, we are beyond fortunate to live in this oasis. Please remember our fellow citizens and your thoughts and prayers. With that said, one of my local heroes, the late Tip O'Neill, once said that "All politics is local." As I offered when I ran nearly two years ago for the councillor-at-large seat, and I offer here again, I am a daughter of Marlboro. I am the second generation to live here my entire life. I was nurtured here, educated here, married here. I practiced law here. My daughter attends school here. My parents still live here. I socialize here, and I have this community in my DNA. I can't help but want to serve my community by bringing my skills and my intuitions based on years of Marlboro running through my blood to the city council as your councillor-at-large. As I said, I ran for this office almost two years ago, and thanks to all of you who voted for me, I lost by a small amount of votes. Did this discourage me? No, it encouraged me to throw my hat in the ring again. By the way, I'm not going anywhere. Where would I go? I listened to your concerns and interests then. I will listen to your concerns and interests now. I want your vote. I will work hard for you. As I have already said, I am a Tip O'Neill kind of woman, which means I will be campaigning the old-fashioned way, knocking on the doors of as many of you as humanly possible in the coming days to say hello, listen to you, and asking for your vote. If I miss you, call me at 508-481-3829. Hopefully, I'll see you soon, and God bless Marlboro.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oram.
Thank you. First and foremost, I kind of thought a minute went by awful fast, but I did want to mention my wife Kathy, my daughter Allison, and our two sons, Stephen and Brian. We all grew up and live at near Fort Meadow, one of Marlboro's greater assets in my review view. Also, I grew up as a younger person on Mount Pleasant Street, another great part of Marlboro. And as noted just previously, it's in my DNA, too. Marlboro's a great city, and I want to be able to take any way I can. And off of my background, as noted, in public health, leadership, and management. Also, I'd like to thank all the teachers and all the staff at Marlboro School Systems. As noted, my kids have all gone through the school system, and I'm also a product of that. So go Panthers! Another... And I also want to say, and it's been mentioned, our school system is one of our greatest attributes. Just if you're out looking for a place to live, first things people call me on sometimes are how are the schools? So it's a great attribute. We know that. It's our future, so we need to continue to keep our minds open to school needs. Also, I would like to note, and I'm reading at Lib off here, that, you know, through the years of working with city councils, sometimes getting legislation through is not always as easy as you think. And I brought out a very unpopular situation at one point. It was for our safety officers to carry Narcan, because at that point in 2014, it wasn't popular. Thanks to the city councillors and to the safety staff, our safety officials carry that. Last but not least, as serving as one of your city councillors, it is a privilege, and I thank the voters for that privilege. And I ask for one of your votes on November 7th, and thank you all for having this process and debate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Juair.
Thank you. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve this city as a councillor-at-large for the past two years. Marlboro has certainly seen plenty of growth over these years, and the next several years are not... It's gonna be no different. Someone said to me not too long ago that this area is the new 128 Bellway. So it is important to have the right people in place to monitor the growth and expansion of this city. It is important that we as a city not only monitor the potential commercial and residential growth of the future, but to also monitor our city departments to make sure they are keeping up with this growth. Seeking mitigation money from developers to ease the growth that they are producing is as important as the growth itself. We as a city have a lot of internal growth coming up in the next few years. First and most importantly is that building a new fire station in the growing west part of our city, expanding our library, and looking to build a new elementary school, elementary school, to name a few. Although some of these projects won't affect the tax rate of our citizens for years to come, the next council has to be watchful, making sure these projects are done right, they are built not only for current use, but built for the future, and most importantly, continues to keep Marlboro in good financial condition. I feel that this is most... I feel that the most important... Sorry. I feel that it is most important for an elected official to be available and accountable to the people that put them in office. Being retired, I am available to serve, meet, and talk with residents all of the time. I meet with some department heads on regular basis, dealing with the issues, such as traffic issues, public safety issues, and road condition issues, to name a few. Although a problem may be seen minor to some, I feel if a resident feels the need to call a city councillor, this problem is huge to them and needs to be dealt with. In closing, I ask for one of your votes for Peter Juair for councillor-at-large.
Thank you very much. And last but not least...
Thank you, Sue. I treat every request to spend your money seriously. I have the ability to say no and not rubber stamp every request that comes down from the mayor or the council. Reach into your pocket. Pull out your purse, your wallet. Now look at the candidates. Who do you trust with your money? The councillors you elect will be spending your hard-earned money. What you need to decide is which councillor-at-large do you trust with your money? I offer the citizens of Marlboro a council that is independent. I have accepted no money from individuals or special interest groups. I have used my money to run the campaign, not yours. Your money belongs in your wallet. This enables me to focus my energies on what is the best interest of the city and not returning political favors for debts. I believe in spending my own money to demonstrate my commitment to the voters that I am worthy of representing the residents of Marlboro as their councillor-at-large. You have the unique opportunity on November 7th to select the team that will be representing the city. I want to be on that team. Please vote Mike Osing, councillor-at-large, on November 7th, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, all of you. I'd like to thank our partners, WMCT TV. I'd like to thank the Marlboro Regional Chamber of Commerce. I'd also like to thank our panelists, Robert Hannison and Frank Collins, and especially Emily Greenwood, who's done a phenomenal job with timekeeping this evening, and for everyone participating. Most of all, I would like to thank each and every one of you for running, for attending this evening, and most of all, all the great effort that you've put in for a chance to serve us, all of us in our community, in our wonderful city of Marlboro. Please join us for the Chamber's Business Consumer Expo on Wednesday, October 25th, at the Marlboro Courtyard by Marriott. It'll be from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The public is welcome. I hope to see you all there. Just remember, working together works better, and please remember to vote on November 7th for the future of your city. I thank you.